Two o'clock, we do have a quorum. Director Thomas will be late. Item one on the agenda. It's a special session. Consider and take appropriate action to approve bid and award contract for Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One, wastewater treatment plant improvements and authorize the board president to execute all necessary documents. Discussion or a motion?
I think Kieven wants to tell you all a little bit about the contractor and he does have a, the bid tally and a letter for you as a handout.
Yes, you have in front of you a score sheet or a bid tab of all the bids. We had six bids that ranged from fourteen million, seven hundred thousand down to thirteen million, three thirty-five. The apparent low bidder is a company called Weber Kadawwa. And we are not recommending that we go with either alternate. So, the UV alternate is during our investigation, it's coming out where technology wise, there's a good chance that you'll be able to do away with your UV if you have an MBR system. So, the state will not let us do that right now, but there's no sense to try to spend some money on something that you may not even use. And the existing UV works fine for the, for, in the capacity that we have right now. So, we would not recommend doing that. Also, alternate number two was something that would be a good idea, but since we don't really have the money, we would not recommend going with either alternate.
What was alternate two?
Is the digester, do some additional work at the digester and thicken up your digester. But what I'd like to talk to you today about is, is the general contractor at Weber Kadawwa. I'm just gonna call it by Weber because it's easier to bet. This company, these two companies, Weber, you've probably seen them around working on the highways. They've been doing, they're basically highway contractors do a lot of highway work. Kadawwa is a Spanish company who has done quite a few water and wastewater treatment plants in Spain and in Poland. They formed a joint venture as of November of last year to do municipal work or this type of work, utility work in the, in the United States. So far, they, based on my knowledge, I'm not sure they have gotten a job. This would be the first or can, maybe the first job that they have putting this together. The second low bidder is, is five hundred thousand dollars more than the first. And we did research that and found that they have considerable problems down south. They're about two years behind on some projects in Austin. They're having contractors having to come in and redo a lot of the work they are at. So, we could not recommend going with the second low bid. Then the third low bid is another million dollars over our low bid. And that would be awful hard to try to justify spending another million dollars on this plant. We, since the bid opening, I have spent probably seventy-five percent of all my time researching and working with this firm. And their subs, their subs all meet our specs. The, we do have a screen that we have a question about. The electrical company that's, they're gonna supply, we've worked with them, we've checked them out. They've, they're good. Rebel firm, both SCADA companies is firm. Everything checks out. The thing is that this is be their first job. So, we have no reason not to go with these, this contractor. But we have some reservations, or at least I have reservations going with this contractor just because this may be their first job together. If you look at their people that they have, they have people, experienced people in the US that will be over top or in charge of this job. A lot of them, one of them has thirty years of experience in the construction, another one has thirteen. A lot of them come from Archer Western or different other firms. So, they have the people to do the job, but they've never really done one. So, we wanna make that, bring that up to you and let you know about. So, we do have some concerns. One of the concern, one of the ways that we thought about addressing this concern and would recommend you consider is to have an additional inspection on the job during construction, especially at the beginning. We already have in the project, as it is, a full-time inspector on the job doing construction observation. That's what we are normal doing, is generally watching the work. But what we would recommend you consider is coming in, maybe doing the construction manager. Having someone else on the job that's basically sort of runs the project for them, works with them on daily basis, works on their schedules, and just like manages the project with them to ensure that we're getting what we, what we, what we're paying for. That's fairly expensive. To bring in an inspector, do additional inspection plus bring in a contract manager, we're looking at another three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is a lot of money. I would, and that's, that's probably the best way to go. But I think at the same time, we could prob, possibility of maybe coming in, and I haven't got, got this approved with my higher-ups, but coming in on a periodic basis and start out with a, a construction manager and then maybe add on. The reason for that is, is we're assuming a worst-case scenario that we may have problems. But we don't know for sure we will have problems. We know that Weber, I've had, in fact, Neil, you were at the, at the water deal there. That engineer that was there, what, first thing he said was, boy, if you get Weber, that's gonna be a great, great contractor. Well, that's fine, but this isn't a highway job. So, and of course, you've talked to the contractor and they have assured us that they are going to do an outstanding job. But if you ever worked with a contractor, I haven't found a contractor yet that didn't assure me he was gonna do a good job. So, we feel like that, that would be something that, I feel like it would be something that we need to add some additional inspection upfront. And what I'm looking at is if we add somebody upfront, maybe through that first phase of construction. Cause we're, we're having, we've got two new units we're gonna have to build and that's the first unit. That might be a good place to do it. And then we see how they do. If they really surprise us and they're great, then that's fine. If they're not, then I would have some methods and some information to come back and give you specifics on why we have control and why we should continue with construction management. But that's sort of, again, that's, that's more money that's not included in the, in the, in our contract.
Well, my feeling is, I mean, you go out for bid and the qualified capable company should be bidding. We shouldn't have to spend more money to have a person manage their work if they're, I guess, a capable company to do the work. I mean, why would we spend more money to double-check someone? You know, there's bonds and stuff, I take it, that we have, right? That if something goes wrong or?
Yeah, there will be a perfor, a performance bond and there will be a maintenance bond at the end, yes. But I think kind of what Kieven is saying is you don't really wanna wait till the end and find out you have problems when they start happening. And what I had talked with Kieven about is possibly for the next meeting, for our regular meeting, to bring to you all a kind of what I call construction manager at risk type proposal for some amount of time, at least through the first phase, than what it would be if it continued to the next phase. But something that you all could look at and decide if you want to have more oversight of the project as they're, especially through the beginning. I, I agree with Kieven, I think that's a good idea. Just because we, they, they've done a great job of going and checking the references and things that they have. But this company, as a merged company, has not done a project like this as, as a single company. And the only, in, in a lot of situations like this, what, what we would probably be doing is, is even possibly recommending that we not use the low bidder and go with the next one. But we know that their references are not very good. So, we don't really wanna do that.
Yeah, we already know from what Kieven said that Pepper Lawson has a history of being behind and,
Right.
you know, having to have other contractors come in. So, to me, they're out. But what you're talking, you threw a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar number out there. So, you add three fifty to that, now you're at thirteen eight, eighty-five, okay? I don't wanna spend another million dollars on something. But to me, the point I'm getting at is if you're spending thirteen, three, thirty-five, I mean, the company, you shouldn't have to go back and, you know, follow someone up. I agree with what Jennifer just said is you should have a, you know, a random inspection of certain phases as they are completed to make sure they're done right. And I, I don't have any problem with a, a new company. You have to start somewhere, okay? Someone has to be the first job. From the history, you said Weber is mostly highways and then Kadaw, Kadawwa is, they've done some, but no, nothing domestically, correct?
Correct.
How many have they done internationally?
I think in their resume, they have like eight or nine in, in Spain and Poland as far as their wastewater treatment plant. And these, some of these, some of those are seventy million dollar playoffs.
The same type that they're, that we're getting?
Yeah, and they have worked on, they have worked on MBR plants before.
Would you like me to go to Spain and look at one of them?
I'm, I'm part Polish and I don't have a lot of faith in that. Just kidding. But I, you know, I, I guess we're relying on you, Kieven. And if you feel comfortable, obviously, you said going in, it's their first project. But even if it wasn't their first, you're gonna have problems here and there, you know, so. But if you think they have the expertise, which hopefully if they bid on it, they met the expertise side of it. But I don't wanna, I mean, thirteen, three, and then all of a sudden get halfway done, we're going, hey, these guys screwed something up.
I, I wanna, you know, we've talked about Weber and, and again, as you say, I'm just gonna call it Weber because it's a joint venture.
Can't pronounce Kadawwa.
Kadawwa, okay, I did it once, I won't do it again. Who's the key person you've been dealing with there?
At?
Okay.
At Weber.
At Weber, okay.
Uh, Jerome. I sat down and, and asked them last week and I got a, I wanted to know specifically who was going to be their key people. And, Andrew Jerome is gonna be their project manager. He's got thirteen years of experience. He has a bachelor's degree in construction engineering from North Carolina State. He's been working on pump stations at Garni Construction and then some effluent pump stations in Nashville, Tennessee. And so, he's worked for Archer Western and Water Treatment Plant. And so, he has experience in the water, in the, in the plant business.
So, this is who the joint venture has kind of like recruited in this country?
This is who they have as their project manager.
Yeah, okay.
But then after the project manager, the concrete, they have Weber doing concrete. They have Kadawwa doing mechanical.
Yeah.
And then somebody else, and it's, and it's,
Subcontractor.
It's Kadawwa, then they have subcontractors under those.
Okay.
So, is Andy the, the main person, the main project manager?
Yeah.
He, he basically watches over the different other companies and makes sure it all comes together?
That's his, that's his job is, is the, over the, overall project.
His history as, for project manager, has he ever done a project this size before?
According to his resume, yes. And, you know, to give, I don't wanna think this thing, we're, we're in deep trouble cause we've got a lot of built-in safeguards too. We're gonna have a full-time inspector to are included. I'm gonna be on job, on site probably once every, probably at least once a week or maybe once every two weeks if there's not much going on, but I'm gonna be out there. Carl will be out there on a daily basis. So, we do that. We have ten-year warranty on the membranes. We have three-year warranties on all the equipment we're putting in. Plus, after they finish, we have a one-year warranty on all, just general workmanship. So, we've got a lot of interests in, in place. But at the same time, you know, when you start getting down to it, if the, if, if there was a lagoon, if those two basins, first two basins we put in from concrete leak, then that's gonna, that's, that's, it's, it's just gonna cost a lot of money trying to fix it and time, not necessarily be out of your pocket, but out of the contractor's pocket. And then, you know, it just leads to,
That's my main concern is, everything has warranties, but warranties doesn't make up downtime.
Right.
And the downtime, especially, you know, concrete people I've seen putting concrete around this area, they put down a road and six months later it's cracking. So, that's my concern. I, I have every bit of confidence in your company. Carl, eh, you know, but, you know, um, you know, and I, I realize you're gonna be out there checking. I mean, I, if you think this is the best choice, you know, I'm for it. And if you're gonna be watching over, it's the additional expense of, okay, now we're gonna talk about a two or three hundred thousand dollar person to come in and double-check some, someone that, that's why we're rewarding them the bid, that they're supposed to be competent on doing their job. You don't hire a two hundred thousand dollar employee and then hire another person to walk after him and fixes mistakes up, you know?
And I, and I completely understand. You know, I, we have been, not just me, we have been, you know, Bob Lawson, Scott and I have been tormenting you know this since the twenty-sixth of March and we started getting into this thing. We just, there's no real justification that we can find not to use these guys. But yet, I have all kinds of red flags.
Director Thomas has a question.
Well, I was just, Kevin, I was kinda like, like Kevin, I hate to hire someone that you tell us is a reputable company, even though they may be, the red flags as I hear it is that really they just haven't kinda done a job here. Outside of that, it seems like they've, they've done okay. We, we're gonna have representation from you guys there all the time. You're gonna be there a fair amount. And like you said, Carl's there every day. Why can't, why can't you guys give Carl inputs on a, a daily basis on things that need to be looked out for? And he's a pretty bright person. I kinda, I know Kevin was teasing. I think Carl is, could probably do this job without us having to spend another two hundred and something thousand dollars. And, I mean, we built a, a new, annexed our church. One of our assistant pastors added to his workload and managed that thing, very successful project. Bigger, I mean, not as big as this, but, I mean, we've got a guy that really knows that thing like the back of his hand. If you tell him look out for something, nobody can do that any better than he can.
And I think, you know, and I, I have complete confidence in him. Where I'm getting is, and the, and the inspector that we're gonna have on the job side is basically an electrician. He's been on a lot of inspection jobs before, so he knows overall that he's primarily is electrician, electrical, which is good, because that's electrical and SCADA and that will take care of that. He does have, he has his own concerns about reinforcement and concrete. Well, I designed the thing, so a lot of that, I can be out here, but I, we don't have it where I'm out here all the time. So, that's will be what, some of the areas that maybe at that time, we might wanna bring in someone that's, that, that, that's what, they've been a contractor and they've done that and have them watch during the pours, you know, at key times. And that way, you're not talking about three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You're talking about the time that those guys, then crucial times when there's a pour going on. Cause it, once they pour the concrete, you know, you can't go back and change it very easily. And, and those are the key things, I, you know, pipe and things like that, you can move around, change. But once concrete gets in there, it's extremely hard to get back in there and try to fix that.
You don't think Carl could manage that?
Well, I think Carl would have a hard time doing that because it's just knowing where the rebar, how the rebar goes together, how it's tied together, is it correctly, you know, as far as, and then, and also as far as the slump on the concrete, different things like that. I've been doing it for thirty years and I get surprised all the time anyway. It's just, concrete's a different animal and it'd be awful hard to teach Carl how to do that in two or three days.
Do they, on the concrete, that's Weber's specialty though?
Yes.
If they're doing highways, so, I mean, that kinda like, yeah, it's concerning. And as you said, no matter if you get the best concrete person there, it could always be, you know, faults in it or something like that. Do they do core sampling after they pour it?
What one thing, what we need to, and I've talked with Jennifer, one thing we do is that we put in the, in the specs that we would have a test lab, okay? So, we would have to pay, but we, Mud would have to pay for a lab to be on site. But that's not a big amount, but we need to have a lab on site to do, you know, soil testing at different times, cylinder testing, core sampling, different things like that to verify. So, that's something we're, we're gonna have anyways.
Kevin, would, something like the soil stabilization because of the way the ground moves around in this area, is that something that, that you would look at or, and see what they plan to do in that regard as far as, as far as backup, anything that's below ground?
Basically, we've already done that. We had a lab come out and do soil testing from the beginning. We had twenty or thirty bores, I can't remember, taken. And so, we designed our pavement around that. Our, we also designed our founding, our basins and our fittings around what the soils they had. So, we've already taken that in consideration and taken it in the design.
So, you'll have to, you'll have to do some, maybe some excavating and, and backfill of something to replace some of that clay if, if you run into it?
Yes, and all that's covered in the specifications. If it excavation, overexcavation and what type of material they can use and what the specification has to meet to be able to be considered a fill material.
Right, okay.
What was the number you gave us, three fifty or three seventy-five?
It was three fifty to do the full, full-blown.
Does that include the inspector and the assistant general manager or?
It, that was construction management, basically, yes.
Okay, now, who do those two guys report to?
Basically, they report to me. Cause I'm the project manager on the project. Of course, I report to Jennifer.
I can see it's a good deal to have the inspector report to you. What about the general contractor? Is he gonna accept somebody that doesn't report to him and not one of his own employees bossing the other guys around?
Well, we don't boss their around. The, the, the construction manager would work closely with the general contractor and work through him. So, we don't boss the people around, but we would work with him. And then we own the purse, purse strings. So, if he doesn't go what we wanna do, we can either shut him down or we don't pay him. And that can get their attention real quick.
Well, is he gonna direct the work of the general contractor?
Somewhat, he is, he will direct, he will do more than our normal observation. He will help coordinate that very clear to make sure he's staying on schedule and on time, that type of thing.
This is just a general scope of services for a construction manager. The one in yellow is what would be an additional. Everything in white is what you already have.
So, as project manager, you're gonna meet with these people on a weekly or something basis and make sure everything, address the problems if there are any and make sure everybody's, has the materials coordinating? You know, they don't pour something before they have another piece going on?
I don't necessarily do the coordination of constructions, you know, keep up with everything. And that's where the, the construction manager would be out on a daily,
That's that Andy Jerome?
That would, would coordinate that, yeah, he can't do this, you have to get a toy. I don't usually get into the way of how the contractor, just what,
Who's gonna be overseeing to make sure they're on the timeline? Andy's gonna put the pieces of the puzzle together as far as the construction, correct? Working with the subcontractors and contractors to make sure everything fits?
That's, that's the general contractor's responsibility to do that. What we're talking about is a construction manager that oversees that to make sure he's doing that. So that we don't have anything fall through the cracks and then by the time we find out about it, it's been two or three weeks down the road.
Well, again, as Jim alluded, I mean, Jen, I mean, I, I'd like to hear from Jennifer what her ideas are. Do you think there's a need or can Carl kinda oversee, make sure things happen or that? Have you been involved in anything like this, Carl?
Great point, yes.
Okay, so you have it.
Special, one point seven five million.
Okay.
What, what I, my recommendation would be, I don't think that myself or Kieven or Carl can answer the question if we're gonna need this service throughout the entire project. And my gut feeling is, I don't think we will. But what I, what I would recommend is that we have Kieven maybe bring back to us at the, at the regular meeting, like I said, just kind of a stepped, if nothing else, a per hourly amount for this, this type of inspector. And if there's at key times that we wanna have someone out there, we can, we could do that. So, we could have the board, you know, approve up to some amount and only if Kieven and I feel like that's the time that they need to be out there. Because I do have concerns about, I can tell you, I don't know the first thing about pouring concrete. And if I see him out there pouring concrete, it's gonna look fine to me. Carl may know more about it than I do. But that is a very, very intense step, that if they don't do exactly right, we're gonna have problems forever and ever. Which I think is part of what the problem is that the, the plant right now is that when they did some of the concrete pours, it, the, it wasn't, maybe it was the design, maybe it was the pour, I don't know. But some things aren't working so that it doesn't flow from one bin to the next correctly. So, I think that there are key places, I, my gut feeling is, no. I don't think we're gonna need to have this management, uh, management services, you know, twenty-four, seven out there. But I do think that there may be some key pieces that we would all feel better knowing that someone is out there watching when they do that specific thing. So, that would be my recommendation is that we get, you know, some amount. Kieven can, we, we haven't had a chance really to talk a lot about, you know, what the per hour and, and maybe we could come up with some amount of hours and, and, you know, I'll use it like my bank account. We'll only use those hours if we really, really need them. Something like that, I think, would, would benefit the whole project.
I, I like your suggestion and recommendation is that if Kieven and even with Andy Jerome come up with, okay, these are critical times, critical steps. And then we focus our hours or inspection or contract manager, whatever you wanna call the person, in those slots that, you know, we all get a warm fuzzy that, okay, everything's gonna be working. We don't wanna invest in that spray that you can spray on screens and everything and spray it all over.
I, I could agree completely with that. And probably within the next two or three weeks, we're gonna have a meeting, face-to-face meeting with Jerome and these guys. And, cause I wanna see, I wanna see across the table, know who I'm talking about. And I may have a warm and fuzzy feeling at that time, or I may even by saying, man, we need to spend about three hundred thousand more than I thought you. And I won't know until, meet those guys. And let them meet these guys. And so, we're not through with our homework yet, but here's where we're at today.
Maybe they would be open on, if it is three hundred thousand, maybe splitting it because they can market this area for their other domestic possible contracts. I mean, we're not the guinea pig, but we're the first in the US. And if we have additional costs, maybe we can split it with them or come up with that, just a suggestion.
Jennifer, are you asking today that we approve the thirteen, three?
Yes.
And then, and then look at these other,
Yeah, we,
head-ons and, and changes and?
Yeah, we just wanted, you know, Kieven, Kieven and I have talked about this a lot. And we just wanted to make sure that right up front, that you all kind of understood what our reservations are and why. And, but that we do think there's an easy resolution to even get through any reservations that we do have. I told Kieven that I've done a project in the past that it was a company's first project. And I will tell you, it was the best project I ever did. Because like Kevin said, they really wanted to make a good impression because they wanted us to refer them for, for the future. And, and I think we could end up with that kind of a project. So, I'm, I'm very hopeful and I, I feel like we have a good contractor. It's just that there's not the old added security of, you know, we, we talked to five managers that I know and they all said, yeah, they're great. We, we don't have that security.
Well, sometimes that's not good either because all the people that did the good work for them work elsewhere now.
That's true.
Um, I make a motion that we approve the bid of thirteen thousand, three thirty-five, or thirteen million, three thirty-five. And award the bid to Weber Kadawwa of the Woodlands of Texas.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll call for the vote, all of those in favor. It is unanimous.
Before you sit down, are we, it sounds like both you and Jennifer have concerns about the concrete. And so, is it, was it your idea to hire a construction manager? And, uh, so is it, was it your idea to hire a construction manager throughout the project, a single John Jones-type guy? Be there from start to finish, is that what you're suggesting, or, or are you suggesting experts in concrete for the concrete piece of it?
Well, it just so happens that the construction area that we're talking about, is, has done a lot of plants, he knows the piping, he knows the pumps, and he knows concrete. So we have one that would take care of the whole thing. Like I said, that, that's sort of the, I think I said, that being, that's sort of the, the worst-case scenario, or the best solution, to have that person out there all the time, that way you don't have to worry. But that's a lot of money, and I understand that. We may not have to have that, but we don't know until we get started.
Can you find a number-one-type guy that works part of the project, and, uh, or maybe periodically comes and goes? Sounds like if, if you want to get a really top-notch guy, you're talking about full-time employment.
This guy, that we will have a full-time guy out there, and this guy that we're talking about will be out there twenty hours a week. Is, is what, is what we, we have worked out, so.
Same guy throughout the project.
The same guy, there will be two guys out there, well, one out there the full-time, and then the construction manager will be out there twenty hours a week up at that, for this amount. Now, that's where I'm, I, I, that's where it's laid out for the three hundred fifty thousand. I think, like Jennifer does, that I'm, or maybe hoping that you get down there, you know, in six, seven, eight weeks and say, well, it's pretty obvious, these guys, we don't really even have to be out there, they're gonna do a great job anyway. So we back off that guy. But at the same time, I've been on there where I couldn't have enough, I've had jobs, I couldn't have enough inspectors out there. Because they're just, you know, I always, I look at Tech Dot, nobody has more inspectors on a job than Tech Dot. And there's nothing that gets taken to the dirt like the state does. So, you know. Inspector's not, but it sure helps a lot, especially if you have the right people out there.
I mean, the positive side of this is Weber's forte is concrete.
Right.
So they probably have one of the best, or some of the best, people that are knowledgeable on pouring concrete, that's the positive side.
But it's highway concrete and not basin concrete. But you're right, you know, they should know how to finish concrete, how to, and how to work with it, how to tie steel, that should not be a problem.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your time.
Sure, thank you.
Kevan, um, would it be possible that we might could get, um, Mr. Jerome to maybe come to our April meeting, and that the board could kind of one-on-one meet with and talk face-to-face? I think that could be real helpful.
Sure, we can, I can contact him and see what, and see what he says, you know, I, I, like I said, I haven't met him. He had, there were a couple of guys here doing the pre-bid and at the bid that were from them. So, but though, that was not him, I found that out. So, yeah, I can certainly talk with them and, and see if he would, uh, be at the meeting.
Do we, before we leave this topic, do we need, um, Pam, do we need to authorize, uh, our president to sign the contract, or is the motion?
The way you guys have approved it is just fine, as long as it's consistent with your motion, he can sign it, 'cause you took action.
Okay, no more questions, uh, thank you, Kevan.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, item number two, consider and take appropriate action to set a date for the groundbreaking ceremony at the wastewater treatment plant, Jennifer?
Um, I wanted to go ahead and get this out there a little earlier, um, we've provided y'all a copy of the May calendar. And, um, the, the first week of May, you can just mark that out, that's not gonna work, but, um, if we wanna do a groundbreaking out there, I thought this might give us a chance to go ahead and pin down a date, and we could start working on some invitations. And you all could start sending me some emails with suggestions of any specific individuals you'd like to invite. If we wanna invite the whole community, we can certainly do that. We, we may wanna invite some of our, uh, state representatives, maybe some people from the county, um, to come out and just do kind of a formal groundbreaking.
Jim, maybe our friend, uh, uh, Ryan, Calgary? You know who I'm talking about, wouldn't, wouldn't it be proper to invite a, a guy like him as a, along travel?
Yeah, we, Jennifer, I talked about this before, and, and Bill and Linda Brookings and her assistant have all agreed, they would come if possible, if they were, extend invitations to them.
Linda is with the TCQ, so she would be a great person to get out.
Kevin, what was the guy that we, that works for her that we deal with? Can't think of his name.
With Lena?
Justin.
Justin?
Justin, yeah, she said she'd, she, you said she'd bring him as well.
Uh, Jennifer, do you wanna make a suggested date?
Uh, well, do you all wanna do it on the weekday, on the weekend? You all kinda give me an idea where you would like to, and then, um, our regular board meeting will be on the nineteenth. Um, so we may wanna do it after that, maybe that Friday, the twenty-second? Afternoon?
Anybody object to that?
No, no objection.
Okay, Neil, okay.
Yep.
Do you have a suggested time, Jennifer?
Uh, what do we say about, um, maybe two o'clock? We could have some snacks, you know, like light refreshments. I don't know if everybody's gonna wanna eat them at the wastewater plant, but we can always bring everybody back here for a light reception.
They're not prepared by the staff down there, that's fine.
You know, might, uh, just, just a thought to, to swizzle on, um, there could potentially be a number of people there that haven't sat through any of this. Some, uh, some pictures and a short description of what we're doing might be real helpful. I think that technology is kind of interesting, particularly if you, if you, uh, keep it simple.
Kevan, does that mean you have to cancel your cruise to Hawaii, or?
How much, how much, uh, what do you expect?
Okay.
Yeah, how much would it cost for like a, a shuttle bus or something, where we could do a presentation here, and then because of parking and stuff down there, we could just all, people could get in the shuttle bus?
I have my new SUV.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Hay, hay trailer in the back and stuff?
Actually, we looked into a shuttle bus for something else once before, and we were surprised at how not expensive it was, so let's, we can look at that.
Well, it might be something, so then you don't have a bunch of cars going down and parking all over the place down there.
Okay. All right, we'll look at that.
Okay, moving on, we were now ready for our closed session. The time is two twenty-seven?
Two thirty-seven.
Sorry, two thirty-seven. Pam, will you lead us into it?
Yes, sir. Pursuant to section five-five-one point oh-seven-one, the district will consult with its attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Open Meetings Act, or to seek advice from counsel on legal matters involving pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offers. A, trespass upon land allegation by Maguire Partners Solana Land LP. B, agreement regarding relocation of utility infrastructure improvements Solana with Maguire Partners Solana Land LP. C, temporary restraining order, temporary injunction, and permanent injunction proceedings pending in the forty-eighth District Court of Tarrant County, Texas. D, pending litigation in cause number fourteen dash zero-three-five-four-zero-one-five-eight in the District Court of Denton County relating to access to the three point nine-nine-six acres of land purchased by the district from BDMR Development LLC in January of two thousand thirteen. E, agreement with THB Construction Company regarding security for potential future fines related to damage to the district wastewater system during January two thousand fifteen. And F, terms of potential lease with the Town of Trophy Club for use of district buildings located at one hundred Municipal Drive.
Thank you, Pam. Corey, we will now reconvene into our regular session, uh, the time is, uh, four twenty-five, thirty-five. Four, consider and take appropriate action regarding closed session items, uh, do we have any motions?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a motion, uh, regarding three B, the agreement regarding relocation of utility infrastructure improvements Solana with, with Maguire Partners Solana Land LP. I'd like to make the motion that our attorneys make the changes that were discussed in our executive session, and also provide an offer of settlement.
We have a motion, we have a second, uh, any discussion? If not, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor, it is unanimous.
Let me just clarify, that covered both B and C on your executive session agenda.
Thank you.
Yes, sorry.
We have any other motions?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, regarding, uh, closed session, item three E, the agreement with THB Construction Company regarding security of potential future fines related to the damage to the district's wastewater system during January two thousand fifteen. I move that we, uh, uh, we approve the, uh, agreement that was discussed in our executive session.
Second. We have a motion and a second, if there's no discussion, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor, it is unanimous. Do we have any other motions?
Yes, uh, Mr. President, I make a motion, uh, regarding agenda, item three F, as in Foxtrot, to accept the lease agreement for the municipal, uh, annexed building with the town with the said changes discussed in session.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Director Thomas, is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, it is unanimous. With that, uh, we will adjourn our meeting at exactly four thirty-seven.
I think Jennifer wanted to make an announcement real quick.
Go ahead.
Yes, I'm sorry, I did, I just, I know it's been a long time since the beginning of the meeting, so I wanted to remind everybody to mark your calendars that we've now agreed to set our groundbreaking ceremony for the wastewater treatment plant for Friday, May twenty-second, at two o'clock. And if there is someone specific that you would like me to consider, I mean, to invite, please make sure you email those people to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the meeting's adjourned.